I like it.
She's staring at me.
Yeah.
This bike's called the Noah Lab.
What?
She couldn't get out of here.
But God doesn't want to take on her.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Okay, some over there, let's hope it's not a donkey.
Well, I need to tell you, he's always in games. I don't know where he's been. I know it's the town. It's fair. It's ridiculous. Yep. Not here. That's that's.
Guys, over. Why? Which one?
I bet. I'm very good. It's awesome.
I don't really. I don't know.
Try to get that. You didn't do anything. Something.
Very quiet.
Yeah. Very quiet. Oh, this thing. Yeah. I was thinking. Yeah, it was a little slow, but it was like, we didn't really have a big grant.
I said that everything was standard. So they were. They didn't see. Good night. Yeah.
And maybe they're still. Right. I also want to work in this. Any rules?
What do you think? There are a couple of studies what happened.
All right. Seven o'clock. Start with the legislation. I proudly testify, United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, and is equal, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Um, we will call the meeting to order and we'll start with the public forum. Does anybody have anything they would like to bring to our attention at the moment? Anybody? All right, then we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Does anybody have anything to add?
No.
And? You're going to read it?
I got.
I have two items, consent agenda, item four point four, the hiring of Michael Ryder to the Winter Fire Department. We need that for para, so it just needs to be on there.
Okay.
And then we'd like to add agenda item five point nine, city council meeting times and places. Um, a couple of the councils would like to discuss the meeting time and switching it back to the original Tuesday. Um, I also would like to you have agenda item five point eight pulled to the first one. It's the ambulance and fire department building scope of work from ISG, just so that they get out of here.
Thank you. Something to plan to me. Somebody like to move to through the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jenny, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ed. Any discussion? Any discussion, any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carried, we have an agenda. Um, consent agenda.
The only thing that I was gonna mention on the consent agenda is that Second Street is, um, obviously proceeding forward. The expenses to Second Street Council does approve before we pay. Um, the, the claims that comes with it has a top sheet that Brian prepares, our engineer. And, uh, line item eight is what we're paying that day. Now, you can also read the rest of Brian's spreadsheet and it breaks it out on what items are being expensed for that particular total. So every week they get together with the construction crew, figure out what the totals are. They show us what they've done and that's how Brian arrives at the invoices.
Good.
And obviously though, remaining going forward will be paid for by the bond. That was approved by council, so.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Otherwise, move to prove the consent agenda.
Someone. Kelly.
All right, Kelly moved.
I'll second.
Second by Don. Any discussion? Any discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carried. All right, we will move to five point eight ambulance building scope of work.
So, um, city council, we've seen this before, but this is an update from the scope of work for the, uh, winter ambulance and fire department. And I thought, um, since it's been a while and we had a different council, we should really talk about how we arrived at this point. Um, so about a year ago now, um, there was cracks in the foundation of the old ambulance building, uh, which has actually gotten worse since we vacated. Um, our building code inspector went through the building at first was not worried at all, um, and then got to the basement where, um, some foundational pillars were taken out. Some metal beams were missing. Um, there's definitely a sag to the floor, especially on the south side. There's some conditional things that, um, would have to be up to code if we remodeled it. The remodel just for the items that he believed would bring us back up to ADA accommodations would be about half a million dollars. So at the time council thought, um, investing in a century old building, um, was maybe not the best use of public money and that we would start, um, talking about developing a plan to combine the fire and ambulance building. So what the scope of work, um, proves and gives to us is basically, um, all the surveying, surveying permitting, um, development and, um, environmental impact in phase one, um, gives us, um, conditional funding and uses of funding. But, uh, we did check with other, um, agencies, um, before we chose ISG the first time. And I will tell you, um, that yes, they were qualified, but the totals were almost the exact same. There was one out of Mankato, um, that I, I actually partners with often to do their environmental reviews. Um, their fee plus what ISG was going to charge us for the environmental review would have been about three fifty. With this type of, um, building, just so you know, for funding sources, um, you know, we definitely have to go to the state. We'd have to look for some, some additional state funding. Um, we have the second largest volunteer ambulance territory service in the state of Minnesota. I think that bodes well for us. I think it bodes well that, um, you know, our old ambulance barn is over a hundred years old. It's not like we built it thirty years ago. Um, and you know, we haven't had this type of investment from the state in this area for quite some time. So, um, DDA was also consulted when it comes to the USDA funding source of this. Shannon thought we could loan about three million comfortably for this building. So obviously the difference of whatever we come up with needs to be paid for by the state. Um, so how, how have other departments been successful at that? Pretty successful. I mean, St. Peter just built a brand new fire department, not a combination building, fire department. Um, I think they received seven million dollars in funding from the state. Um, they know that this is a priority. I know that public safety has been putting on webinars about how to ask. So, um, it's definitely doable, um, even at a town our size. And remember, we basically serve, especially for ambulance, the western half of simply known, so. And David is here from ISG, if you have any questions about the design or the concept elements. Um, there's still a group together, I will thank Ed, he's kind of rounding that up again as we're working on Second Street and some other park projects. Ed has kind of spearheaded some of the design concepts.
We have questions, things we want to discuss about that.
Uh, we'd like to help you with the project. I think it'd be a really good asset for the community and our concept design captures everything you've asked. It's, you know, six bays, two of them are drive through. So you don't have that, the bays are, the building is eighty foot clear, she did double stack, kind of vehicles in it as well. It's got, uh, all the supporting, the laundry, the decon, the locker rooms for, for the people. It's got, uh, four sleeping units and a little lounge area for members when they're there. Um, some large meeting room that could hold potentially fifty plus people in it. Um, plus the offices and supporting staff. So very good asset, good location with access. Um, and it's also by the request that it's built that will last. It's not overdone, it's not a Taj Mahal, but it's built to last, so it'll be durable materials that are, um, are cost effective, but will last as opposed to, and you can. The dialogue of the pole building has come up in the past and we really don't want your fire station to be a pole building. It's not gonna, it will last some, but it won't last as long as, uh, the concrete block and tree walls where the, from the fire department and precast walls.
How large is the building?
Building is just under sixteen thousand square feet. It's around fifteen, seven eighty. And then it has a three thousand square foot mezzanine on the upper level and storage and whatnot. It's really maxed out the site in terms of what we could put on that site.
Am I understanding this right? This be fire and ambulance?
It would be both. It'd be fire and ambulance.
How is that? Are they divided in any way? Or are they, it's pretty much open, the ambulance is in there?
The parking bays, it's really open. I think the ambulance are set to be on one side and.
Yeah.
Hot engine on another. There is a small room for the ambulance crews to hang out in when they're in the building. That's right off the bay to get through vehicles, but in terms of which all, it's the rest of this for everybody.
Okay.
So I, I have the concept pulled up here if anyone is. I've got a hard copy too, if you might.
That won't be serious.
And that's not final, why do you mean?
Right.
More, I mean, it's just, uh, it fits, it's got all right pieces. We gotta mess it up a little bit. Uh, more detail, what fits and.
Yeah. But longer said.
It's north of.
North of the lodge. Oh, okay. Yeah.
Kind of in that angle, the last there.
And I can send the concept out to you.
Yeah, like give it.
Yeah.
I think we had it in the last, uh, packet. I don't think I had to attach it to this.
But I don't remember when. It doesn't really matter because the railroad tracks go right through town, but there's no issue with putting it right by the railroad tracks.
We, we're, we'd be far enough away from the tracks, um, I shouldn't talk to the engineer, but we'd be far enough away from the tracks that we wouldn't even have to file for a variance or anything with that.
We'd be outside the. Center, so you'd just be adjacent to it. So any noise would be the only thing you'd hear from it, which doesn't really impact the fire station, ambulance station, like what I've said.
I think it's happened in years now, but the train used to sometimes stop and then you had to go around a different way.
It does happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But way around. It, yeah, and it doesn't matter where you are in town.
Yeah. And from this location, we can easily get out to the highway.
True.
Typically, they don't block the highway and the.
Right.
Town streets, so.
Yeah, that's good.
And we did look at multiple sites when we're.
I think saying that, I think we're at six sites.
So it's not just, hey, here's one, it was, this was the best of all the options.
Yeah, I know that a lot of thought went into that.
Yeah.
All right. So what do you need to discuss tonight?
Um, a motion. Yep.
Already ready to make a motion regarding this? Go ahead, let's go.
So this would include construction documents, design development, um, bidding construction administration. So because it's such a large project, um, the construction managing of it is really important. If we go for USDA, it's going to be prevailing wage and that is, they can manage that. It's going to be good for them, for me not to be doing that. I give your one. And then obviously some, some surveying in, in phase one, environmental.
Basically what's there is overall RP's associated with getting your building from now until it opens. And even a little bit after that, because it'll be back after it's open.
And I would assume that we have to have all of those before we can apply for.
Yeah, so USDA won't, um, accept any, um, grant requests until we have an actual construction document and concept that, that, uh, council has approved.
And.
And for that matter, the state won't even look at it if we don't have a, a total in concept.
And where's payment for this coming from?
Yeah, good question. So there are actually some contingency funds from both our general fund and then ambulance and fire as well. And what they have done in the past, um, and they did this in St. Pierre and they did it in Adelia as well, um, is that when they went to the state, they actually asked for the engineering money back. They asked for the three fifty back. Um, and the state obliged, so they know it's expensive.
All right, council, what's your wishes?
I'm gonna make a motion to go forward with what we need to do to get it going.
Okay. Motion by Danny. There are seconds.
Please second it.
Second by Londa. Uh, discussion. Good time, we've got people from ISG, they have questions. Okay, discussion.
What's the timeline?
We start being tomorrow if you wish.
Once.
Realistically, it's gonna take, we need to get moving now. If you want to think about maybe doing some earthwork, you need to, you need to get the phase one done, you get served on, you get sort of one on, that can all. We can put the wheels in motion and start those. We need to have further meetings to further design. It's gonna be four months to develop the documents. Also remind us, depending on how we make decisions.
Okay.
So get in the ground this, this spring, this fall, maybe doing birth work, prep work, maybe more, really need to get in more. But now's a good time to get it going because even if you push it this spring, you set up contractor up for success that they're, they're not worried what they're gonna do versus bidding. When everybody's got it, you're giving it time. Hey, I know what I'm gonna do in the spring time. It'd be nice, be nice to have concrete done this year and then they, if, if the contractor has time and they want to start winter work, they can do winter work too. And we can stage it to do multiple packages of, we're gonna get a site package, a civil package. We know that our civil engineer is gonna be on project. Um, you know him well.
We do.
He's all studying in the air.
And we're perfect.
Yeah, there you go.
But yeah, then we can start civil package, all these other packages to get the site ready. We can do a concrete package, we can do a, if it's precasted outside, we can order that. So it's ready or mechanical items, which are usually along the, I don't think those wheels in motion where they're ordered, ready to go and we need them versus waiting too long and then we can't open to do all the camping and it's.
All right. Any further discussion? Then I will follow the question, and all who's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I think you first.
Yeah. Right. All right, so, um, then we're gonna move back to five point one. Um, resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, order of abatement.
Yeah, so I'm gonna take you through some of the, some of council has been, um, on council while this happened and some of you have not. So there's actually two different orders, um, of abatement and inspection. There's two different types on your agenda tonight. The first one, um, is a normal order of abatement. It means that the police have enforced an ordinance and are asking, um, the property owner to clean up his property according to our ordinances. So, you know, cut your trees, get the, um, couch and mattresses and multiple things up and, and many. I will tell you that, um, Officer Hacker has been working with the particular one for five point one, uh, for at least a year, um, to get his property back up to snuff, um, after four violations and no progress. That's when it comes to city council and we make the, um, decision from council on whether the property is abated or not. The other one that is on here is order of inspection. So there are multiple properties in Winthrop that have what we would say concerns over structural issues. They are buildings that have stayed out in the elements for far too long. Or for instance, one of them was hit by a semi, um, and it hasn't been fixed yet. These are structural things and there's a different process for that. So, um, when we talk about, it's not your turn yet, but you'll have a chance to speak in just a minute.
I just want to make sure that this fiction you have written down here is corrected.
Okay, well, I'll let you have your turn.
Okay.
When we open it up.
There's nobody.
We're in the middle of a business meeting. Yep. Um, so the other one's the order of inspection and that is done by Darren, um, our building code inspector. So, um, once we approve it through council, they will contact the owner of the property. They will go through and ensure that it is structurally sound. If it is structurally sound, um, you know, that's kind of the end of it. You know, they're allowed certain ways to live and we can't do much about it. Um, but if there is something found, they'll be ordered by a court, a district court to fix the property. We actually go to court over there. Um, and what that court then orders really depends. Sometimes the court will say, you know, based on the inspection document, this needs to be taken down. It's a public health problem and it needs to be taken down. You know, there's raccoons living in it or there's giraffes there, whatever it is. Um, the district court makes that decision and that final decision is final and then we execute it. Um, with the order of inspection and then abatements, um, it does not fall on the city. So that property owner is responsible for fixing and maintaining the property. We're in, we're in charge of ensuring that our ambulance, fire, police and in general, the public have a healthy environment to live in and be surrounded by. So, so there's two different kinds and, um, what will go through is we'll go through each resolution. I'll kind of give a brief overview, but there's pictures in your packet. Um, and then we'll give the property owners a chance to, to speak on the matter if they wish. So, um, resolution two twenty-four dash zero one five is order of abatement for, um, Stevens. Um, it is property located at seven zero four North Harbor Street. Um, Mr. Steuben, uh, uh, if you're in the audience and want to speak, now's your time.
I spoke with him about two hours ago. I don't know if you guys want me to play his conversation.
Eric.
Yeah.
Um, and per the abatement process, this is the updated pictures that we're.
This is for the, that's.
That's for this.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Seven zero.
Got it.
So he called, um, probably right around three. Um, allegedly said that he didn't get any of the citations or any of the documentation that we sent out to him, even though he's gotten them in the past. Um, specifically I confronted him about the couch that used to be on the boulevard. You can still see it in one of the pictures there up against the garage now. Um, that was there for several months, out, um, right next to the street. And, um, I just told him, I was like, well, you know, we, you knew that that was not appropriate to put that out there for several months. Um, given that you've had several warnings in the past, um, we've dealt with this individual since I've been here with these types of things. So, uh, he agreed that he knew that he wasn't supposed to do that, um, but did it anyways. He, um, was urged to come here tonight and speak with you guys about his intentions on cleaning it up. Um, obviously he's not here. Um, that was the same thing in the last time that we went through with this process too. Um, so all in all, uh, Mr. Steuben, um, has shown that he does not necessarily care, um, about our city ordinances and to follow through with them. And I explained that all we're looking for is compliance with them. And he said that he understood that and that he was going to be cleaning up his property. But once again, we've heard that in the past. So, um, I told him about this process and if you guys approve it, what would happen next and, uh, timeframe for him to clean it up. And, um, he said that he's going to allegedly, um, but he does know the consequences if he doesn't as well, that it would be potentially assessed to his taxes too.
So we've asked him, you know, this property before?
Lots and lots of times.
Yeah.
This one, I go by him.
He's been given four citations just this year.
I think it's gotten worse since the spring. We haven't actually gone through the abatement process with him before, have we? Or we have.
I don't believe.
No, last year we gave him, um, additional time to clean up his property and at the end of twenty twenty-three. And he, he didn't, well, he did, he did clean up some of it and then, and then all of a sudden there's a couch out on the, on the.
He got just barely.
He did make progress last.
Good enough that we're receiving progress and we're giving him additional time. And then it became winter time, um, and then the couch showed up and that's when we started the whole process over again. So, um, it's just.
And he'll have ten days to correct the property and the problems that we pointed out before Public Works comes in and chops down trees and it goes after some of the, the blight.
And he was given fair warning, um, the costs associated with all of that process, because it is going to take quite a bit of resources from the city to get that done.
What do you guys? I say we do what we need to do to get it quite done. So we should kind of do it.
Then a motion to move forward with the abatement?
Yep.
Motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion, all those in favor of resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion carried. Moving on to number sixteen.
So, um, this is a little bit different. This is both an abatement and, um, an order of inspection. So, um, Mr. Durey's, uh, property last year, if you remember, we did a bait, um, a fair number of junk and, um, just kind of rubbish on his property. Um, at that time, Mr. Durey, um, also was warned again about his shed that he brought in of the property. Uh, our previous engagement with this was actually when he failed to get a permit to bring the, the actual storage unit in. Um, per state code, this is actually not city code, per state code, if a shed is over a hundred square feet, it needs to be on some type of footing. It needs to have concrete blocked, whatever that might be. Um, so we actually did take this to court in twenty twenty-two and, um, because of some late filings, we actually had to start with classes over again in twenty-three. Um, we gave Mr. Durey almost a year, um, since the last time we talked about this, to get it fixed, to put a cement pad down or to put correct footings in, um, and he's failed to do so. So, um, there also is some, um, rubbish again on his property. Um, uh, just random tires, grills. He has tarps again, um, that's covering up, um, I would say just junk. And so, um, we're asking for counsel for two things on this property at two one three South North Philip Street. Um, the first is, um, an order of inspection, so we can inspect the shed and get the shed to the correct code. And then also an order of abatement of the items that are in the yard again. Mr. Durey, did you, I saw that you were here, did you want to speak?
You. Thank you. Um, I am doing my best to try and get things took care of as fast as I can. I don't know, the guy, you know, they get an abatement already and pour down two carports and a tin shed and I admit the carports were shot. The covering ornament went to hell, they needed to be got rid of and stuff. Um, the shed he's referring to, I admit I screwed up. I didn't think about having to get a permit to get it in. It's a fully built shed, fifteen and a half foot wide by thirty-two foot long. It came from Comfort, Minnesota, was part of the greenhouse nursery there that a woman inherited. And I bought the shed for fifteen hundred dollars and paid four hundred and fifty. And I bought the shed for fifteen hundred dollars and paid four hundred and fifty to have it brought here on a trailer. It's fully self-contained, it's insulated, it's wired and everything. The main thing I understand is that this has to have some type of foundation under something. I'm trying to figure out. What I can do to make it come into code and stuff, you know? So that's why I came here tonight. I'm trying to avoid more trouble. I don't wanna tear down a completely good shed, you know? And if I have to, I'll move it, but I'm trying to figure out how to keep it, cause I have nowhere to put stuff anymore now. So.
Just from a practical standpoint, the order for inspection and the order for abatement, are those two separate things?
No, same thing. Yeah.
That's what I thought. There's one to clarify.
Yeah, and, uh, order of abatement will go through city council. The order of inspection will go through the district court.
Is it wired now? Do you have electrical going through it or?
I have an extension cord that I can plug in or plug out to it just. On which I'm willing to put wiring underground if I have to, that's fine. Um, the thing basically, I understand how it's built. It's built on five thirty two foot long. Stringers like wood that are roughly five inches wide and eight inches high. And there's actually metal brackets on to a, on each end that you can hook on to it to pull it. While it's on the ground. But I said, it's all self-contained, insulated, everything, wired.
Um, when did you move it in there? Last summer?
No, I like twenty twenty two. It was spring of twenty two.
Michael, I understand it takes a while to get things done, but I don't think it takes that long to get some type of foundation underneath the shed.
I didn't understand that and stuff. I'd been going.
First you heard of it is this process of putting a foundation underneath? The first you heard about putting a foundation underneath this shed was just recently within the last?
So I tried talking to the city building inspector on the phone. That's on a blank or something. And the second time I talked to him, he said he had never even talked to me before. Which was not true.
I don't know about that, but I think you've had a lot of time to get it done. I mean, we've all done projects here and. I just, this is unacceptable.
Why can't I put a foundation under?
I don't know. Why haven't you?
I'm asking on.
I, I haven't you can, can't you? How much? How much time does he? I think you can, but how much time do you think we need to give you to get this done?
Well, that's what I mean. I'll get it done now. Um.
I would think if, even if we move ahead with this, it's, it doesn't happen overnight, cause it's gotta go through the rest of the process. That it would give you some time to start making arrangements and. I, I would guess that if you have a, you know, you have an agreement from somebody who's gonna come and pour a concrete slab for you and it's, it's got a. Completion date planned. And even if this was still moving forward, that would, that would be definite concrete, bad pun, concrete steps. Taking toward to get it done. Yes.
Yeah.
I think, um, so just a, uh, you'll also have to get a variance and that would be through.
I'm sorry, my hearing aid, something went through on my phone and knocked out my.
You would have to get a variance too by planning and zoning, because where you put the building is not twelve feet from the actual property lines. Um, so you would, you would have to file for variance before you poured the concrete. I won't want you to pour the concrete and then have to rip up the concrete. So just make sure that you contact city hall if that's your intentions. We, we have no building permits for your property right now. So you have to file for a building permit of variance.
Okay.
Question. What kind of foundation does he actually need under that?
Does it have to be a full cement slab or can it be blocks?
I think it, it can be a solid base. I understand.
And you, I think once you get the building permit, Darren would, would give you more information about what kind of footings it's gonna be.
Cause one of the things too, I got all the cement blocks that I gotta get rid of, which I'll haul them away, but I have cement blocks. At my house there that are part of the problem stacked up against the side of my house. So I've got cement blocks to put down.
Yeah.
I, I would think.
And once you file for a building permit.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be, that would be where Darren can.
Okay.
Pick up and give you some advice on that.
Do you have name and number of, or where do I?
Right, go to the city hall.
Yeah, go to city hall. We can, we can start the building permit process.
Okay. All right, and.
So that's the shed part. What about the rest of this? Is that just cleaning up?
Yeah, um, that's, you know, that's up to council. I know that, um, there was a couple cars on the property that didn't have registration. Um.
There was one and it's on the car dolly to go to the junkyard. You can go look right now. Like, there's not a vehicle on the yard anymore. And I have one vehicle. I refer to him as my stepson. Me and his mom were never married, but I helped raise him. His van is there. I've got it up on car ramps right now. Cause we had to put a new fuel pump and, um, inline fuel filter on it. I can take it down off the ramps. When I get home, it's licensed, insured, everything. And the tarp that you were talking about that has been picked up, it was just covering, uh, as I call my sons, uh. Just go, go all and my yard trailer and the mower, but that, the tarp is all took down or oiled up and put away.
Great. So what are your wishes?
I mean, I'll go apply for a building permit tomorrow. I'll start it and give me a timeline. I'll do my damnedest to. Get it done and took care of.
I think we have options. One is to just adopt this tonight. You know, we could. We could give a, an extension of a certain number of days. Um.
For a while.
Yeah. How long did you say for?
I don't, I'm not sure how long or certain amount of time, um, a month. And nothing has happened, then we can decide next month.
He has to bring.
The building permit.
Bid for having your.
Whatever.
And then it's not.
That makes sense?
Yeah.
That we'll give you till next month's meeting and if you can show that you've gotten the things taken care of. By then, then we call it good.
But we'd be moving forward now.
Yep. So you're, somebody wanna make a motion so we're all clear what we're talking about?
I think you're making a motion and looking at that, um, to go ahead with whatever's in the abatement here. But holding off on filing it for one month.
Correct.
And if we see evidence that that's being done, then we. That, that's what you meant.
Yeah, that's fine. So at that point, does it even have to come back to council? If, if we, if we approve it tonight with an extension?
I would still have to get approval from council. Um, I think the motion, as I hear it from council, is you wanna give him a thirty day extension. He is expected to get a building permit and he is expected to clean up some of the nuisance. Um, but when it comes to the, especially this process, I just wanna be really clear. Um, especially when it goes to the district court, it has to be within thirty days. So we would, we would have to bring it back to council, which is not a big deal. We can bring it back to council after thirty days.
So we could postpone or table this.
Mm-hmm.
Particular one and then bring it back in thirty days.
Yeah.
Bring it back next meeting.
I move that we table the abatement process for thirty days. To allow Mr. Dureen a chance to get his building permit and information about what he needs for variance. And, um, come back to us with what his plan is, um, to get this taken care of.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
All right, there's a motion.
I'll second it.
Second by a, any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carried. There you go.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on to five point three, resolution twenty twenty four, number seventeen, order of inspection.
So this is four thirteen West Fourth, um, Street. Um, this is an order of inspection and abatement for the university building code. This is, um, there's a hole inside of the house. Um, there's some broken blocks on the foundation. Um, we have a compromised structure. It was involved in a, the house was involved in accidents, um, last fall. Um, we're just starting the abatement process because we would like it to be progressed forward. We still don't have a building permit. Um, for this and we don't know what's going on. So this is why we've come to the inspection process.
Hello, I'm Douglas E. Gunther. Um, my house is one was hit in an accident. Um, I don't know who wrote this up, but they're actually should be arrested. The accident actually happened in January of two thousand twenty four. Um, semi, there was no semi involved. It was a F one fifty pickup truck. So I don't know where they get the semi apart. Um, so it's definitely not a hundred and eighty days, whatever they're claiming. Like I say, it, it's, the only thing that's true in this statement is that my house was hit. And it had, I guess that's the only thing that's true in this accident, this report. Everything else is a total lie. I got a police report says it was done in January sixth, which is the middle of the winter. I'm sixty four years old, gonna be, there's no way I'm gonna fix that hole in the middle of the winter. Especially if it's gonna put my wall.
Was your insurance that's covering that or?
Yeah, that was his insurance. He hit my house.
Right.
The semi, it's, it's a truck that, uh, one fifty truck that hit my house.
Okay, so have you filed for a building permit yet?
No, I, I right now, I'm, I got, uh, one estimate already. Or set, they're doing estimate right now to fix it. Because it's warm enough where they can actually go inside and do it. And tomorrow night at six, I'm gonna, a local contractor. Um, so it will be fixed this, soon they get to it. Um, it's actually the foundation didn't actually crack. What you see is the decorative stone is what actually hit. So it's actually not a foundation issue. Um. Any questions?
What, what day was the accident?
Sixth of January. In the middle of winter.
I'm not in the world this statement. I didn't look at the I C R. I.
What's that?
I just knew that it got hit.
Yeah, I don't even see that date on here.
It's on the first line in the fall of twenty three. Yeah, he didn't put the date down. He just made up, uh, fall of twenty three. I've been talking to the lady cop, explaining everything I'm doing, get it fixed. So we're in cooperation there. She just said to keep me in the loop. So it is being repaired. Like I say, I don't know where they came up with this semi, cause there was no semi involved.
Yeah.
Right. Um, what, like I say, this, this doesn't actually affect my foundation. Cause all it was executive brick is what actually smashed through.
So is this under a porch? An enclosed porch?
Uh, it's an add-on to house. There's a, um, basement. And then there's an add-on, which is no basement under, so it's, uh, also. That's actually, so I have my full basement, all closed and everything.
So on April second, Officer Hacker had contacted you, sent you this letter. And then we heard nothing from you until a couple, what, like a week ago? When did you make contact with Officer Hacker?
Um, couple weeks ago. And so, see, my problem is, I'm sixty four years old. If you put a hole in my house. Do construction in my house, I'll freeze to death. And I'm not willing to die for a hole that's not actually in my foundation.
We didn't expect that you would do the work yourself, but.
No, but I'm not. Right, but it's gotta be warm enough where it actually gets done.
But it's been a very warm winter and people have been working all winter. So that.
Well, I'm.
We're the same age, so.
Right.
Part, I'm, yeah, I'm not buying that.
So like I say, I got one estimate I put in a week ago, that they're still fit to do it. And then the other one I'll be doing tomorrow night.
Okay.
My point of asking about Officer Hacker contacting you is that this one to be even made the agenda, had you just been in contact with us? So when you say, well, I've been in contact with you guys.
Well, I, I haven't been, I, I actually did come down to your office downstairs and ask how long I had to fix it.
Yes, last week you did. It was Monday of last week.
It's like forty three degrees out. You expect me to fix things in the middle of winter?
I think you're.
Right, but like I say, most, most, what I'm running, my problem I'm running into now is, is too early in the year. For most, I don't know where you're seeing all these people getting stuff fixed, because I was told by the, um.
We had an entire.
Yeah.
Building built in the middle of the winter.
Well.
And I think part of the process is, you know, getting a building permit and making some progress toward.
I guess.
Getting it.
Why, why do, I guess I don't understand that. You have to have building permit to fix a damage?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, didn't know that.
Well.
And that kind of goes back to.
Cause right now I have estimate coming from build today for tomorrow. And tomorrow night I got Paul Meiser, um, coming in for an estimate. I mean, tomorrow.
Back to the reason that we do these abatements is because we, if, if you had, that's a bit, a fire in your house. And it was structurally unsound and we sent our firefighters in there, that's, that's not only terrible for you. But it's a terrible risk for our firefighters. So it's, it's up to us to make sure that the, the structures in the city meet building codes.
So you're saying that a non-foundation. Accident. Is considered unsafe to your fire department?
From the, the, the looks of this, we can't know that it's not structural.
Right.
It, it looks.
Like there's a big hole.
Right.
Right.
Which is not in my foundation.
And.
If somebody would've walked by the, the thing, which they did, cause she said she took pictures of it. So they actually went and looked at my house. The police department did. Right, and so.
By it all the time.
Yeah.
So everybody's driven by it.
Yeah, because it's a highway area that.
Yeah, so I just want you to get it fixed.
Well, I will. I'm getting it fixed. I'm getting estimates right now. I have proof that I can get proof that, uh, I'm getting estimates. Um, I have the money. It's not a matter of the money and it's just the time it takes to get it fixed.
What's the picture of the door?
Door. His address cell, so.
Oh, you can't read my address. By the way, if they would've actually looked, do you have a picture of my garage?
No, I wanna know about the door. I don't know, care about the garage. I wanna know about the door.
The door just didn't have my address on it.
I don't know. I can't see it. I can't read it.
Well, it does now. It's fixed.
Okay, cause there, there again, if, if we get an ambulance.
Right, but I, I'm my garage, on the side of my garage. My address is printed in big letters.
On the front of your garage or the side?
The front. As you drive up to the big door.
I think it's supposed to be on the house, so.
Right, which, which it was, but you just, it faded out.
Thing is, if you get it, if you have a heart attack, Douglas, and, and you call nine one one and I send the ambulance to your house, how are they gonna find it? What's that?
Which, which has already been fixed. You go right now to my house, you'll be able to read it.
So you fixed it since the photo?
Yeah.
Perfect.
That's been fixed.
All right, what do we wanna do moving forward? All right, what do we want to do moving forward here?
I think we do the same thing. We give them thirty days to get this permit and get a estimates and.
Permits.
Contractor and get it done. And then if it's not, if, if we don't have it, something moving forward in thirty days, then we'll move forward with the.
Moving forward or just have it done?
Well, I don't think.
You'll never.
Yeah, you need to have a building permit and a contract with the contractor.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
So building permit, schedule contractor.
I guess I didn't realize you needed to get, I thought burning, building permit was, if you add it on to your property.
I, I had to get one to put garage.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
I can get it from it. I guess I didn't realize that you needed, because if you're repairing something that already exists. Where I'm from, in Lafayette, Minnesota, you don't need a permit. Because you're fixing something that's already there. That's like when you put up a fence, you have to get a permit, because it didn't exist before.
Right.
Where if you're fixing, so everybody in this town that nails something under their house needs a permit.
Hole in your wall.
Right.
Well, no, still it's, you said anytime that any work is done, you need it. Okay.
Yep.
I can do.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
All right, so do we want a motion to table that for? You made, you made a motion in.
I'll second.
Any second. All right, any further discussion? Any discussion? All's in favor say aye. Oh, same sign. All right. Thank you. We hope, we hope we don't see you again in thirty days. We hope it's all done.
Well, I won't be done, it'll be.
Okay.
Get a good contractor that has time.
Yeah, like I say, the problem, the problem in this town is that there. Nobody's actually making estimates right now.
All right.
If they are, they're, they're really taking their time.
All right, moving on to resolution twenty twenty four eighteen, order of inspection for.
This is Sheldon, it gets that four one four west fourth street.
Yeah.
This is a notice, notice of inspection. Um. Uh, this property has been vacant for, well, ever since I've been here. It's been a really long time. Sheldon has asked that the city take it over. Obviously, we have no interest in having this. Um, if you look at the pictures, there's just multiple issues. I know that, um, there's been a couple of local contractors.
I bet somebody asked me about that.
Yeah, that they, they went through and they, they went through the house and they basically said, this is not salvageable and it's really dangerous inside. So. My ask for the city, um, this is not gonna resolve itself. This has been an ongoing problem since. Um, since I've been here. Um, and I think it's time for the judge to say that it needs to come down. It's becoming, uh, it's gonna become a pretty big problem. There's holes in the roof now, which water is seeping in every single time it rains. And the structure has some major issues in the foundation.
They actually offered to get that to our church and we looked into it. Things that cost us thirty to forty thousand dollars. To take that down or to burn it because of the asbestos and everything in there, you know, like new.
Well, would a local contractor, would he be interested in trying to rehab it or not?
I have talked to a couple and none of them seem interested.
What if we just wanted to sell the land or sell the property?
Then council would have to pay probably thirty, forty thousand dollars to have it demolished.
Well, I mean, as is, I mean, can't he just put it for sale?
He certainly can. Um, but this is, I think having an order of inspection to make sure that it's structurally sound is.
Yeah.
The right way to go.
Okay, I think he's trying to give it to somebody else so that it's their problem.
Yes.
To have to pay for it to get it taken.
Well, at least we would know structurally, um, if it is somewhat sound, could always, uh, put up.
Well, wouldn't that be the inspection if the.
Yeah, so after the inspection goes through, it goes to the district court on the recommendation that it needs to be tore down or fixed.
Okay.
And then it goes to the property owners' response for. If he's responsible for the, the money that it takes to take down.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Motion by Kelly, is there a second? Second, second by Jenny. Any further discussion? Any discussion? All's in favor, please say aye. Same sign, motion carried. All right. Last one.
Last one.
Order of inspection nineteen.
Um, so this is, um, two ten south harbor street. Um, this is an order of inspection. We actually don't know what we're gonna find. Um. The building is a part of a kind of a double lot that Rhonda Richard owns. This is the, uh, south. Facing lot. There's just, uh, we're, we're really afraid that it has some structural integrity. It's starting to lean to the southwest. Um, and again, it goes back to the health and safety of the community. You know, someone got in there, got hurt, and we had to rescue them with the ambulance. Um, you know, what does that look like? The pictures, you know. On the outside, maybe it's not too bad, but it's actually the foundational problems that were the most concerned about. It's, um, now that this helps, page forty two. Oh, I got it. They look very similar.
Yeah, they do.
They almost. Yes.
Yesterday, yeah, it's. So this is a.
It looks like it's coming off the foundation, like it's leaning that, you know, the, on the one side. It's moved off the foundation. You can clearly see the house.
It has some, some major issues.
All right, motion by Ed.
Second.
Second by Don. Discussion, any discussion? Any further discussion? All's in favor say aye.
All right.
Oppose? Motion carried. All right, um, five point six, Farm City Fun Fest temporary liquor permit.
Liquor, it's, it makes money at Farm City Fun Fest. I recommend the.
I'll second. Motion in the second, is there any discussion? Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
All right.
Close? Good, motion carries. Uh, five point seven, MinDOT invoice payment for our culvert.
Yeah, the Culver project continues. The saga continues. This project has been on the books since I first started here. Um, they do have a new contractor. They are going to start the work in July, middle of July, be done by August allegedly. Um, this.
Oh, here, under, under.
Under the highway.
Yeah, under. So our sewer system runs underneath it, so does some of our electrical. And so this is our cost participation. Um, when it comes to that, it kind, came to about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So sewer, the sewer. Excuse me, the sewer fund is paying for some of it and then electrical is paying for about thirty thousand dollars of it.
And we don't really have much of a choice, do we?
I mean, not really.
No.
Do they have a start date?
July seventeenth, I think it's the.
How long do they expect it to go?
Only a month and a half.
I hope.
They said that they're gonna be done by September. No, we want barricades there, like physical barricades on any street. That's what we asked MinDOT for.
Let's make sure we get that signage done right away this time.
We, uh, we've already made our own signs, the printer.
I'm so moved to get it done.
Motion by Kelly, second by Don, to payment dots invoice. Oh, any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
All right.
Oppose, main sign, okay, carried.
Um, a long time ago, it seems, about a year ago, we switched council meetings to the fourth Monday of, uh, fourth Monday of the month. Um, so that our legal counsel can be here. Now that we have switched legal counsel, um, you know, he's not able to make our actual regular council meetings. And we, Ed has an ambulance meeting during this time normally. Um, and that's ambulance captain. It's obviously difficult for him to be at two places at once. Um, what is councils, I thoughts about moving it back to the second Monday? Um, is that more convenient?
What, what works the best for the?
It doesn't matter to us. To me, it doesn't, it could be the first Monday if we really want it.
Doesn't matter to me.
If there's, if there's one that's gonna be more advantageous for city staff or anybody else, I mean.
It really does not matter to us.
Gets, if we do it right away, it gets the May meeting. This May meeting would be.
It would come really quick, yeah.
Memorial Day.
So maybe June.
And then, um, what would happen is, we as, as council, you guys can move the meeting dates. And then the charter commission would have to meet and put it in the charter that it's meeting on the second Monday of every month.
Do we wanna just move it to the second Monday? Starting in.
Do you wanna start that in May or?
Cause we'd have to adjust for May anyway because of.
It's kind of a, a, a mess either way.
Yeah.
I'm okay with the second Monday.
Okay, let's go. So starting in May. Yeah, what does that do with our couple of motions that needed thirty days?
I think that still gives them time. Um, you know, they'll get an extra week. Cause it will be June tenth.
Oh, we, okay.
I would just wait till June.
Yeah.
So when are we meeting in May?
So May would be the thirteen.
Oh, okay, so we're gonna start it and got it. We'll start meeting.
And we'll have it posted. We'll change online and.
So May thirteenth and June tenth will be the next two columns.
Correct.
Yeah, all right.
Does that work for everyone? Okay.
Somebody like to make a motion regarding?
I'll make a motion to change that to. Second, second Monday of the month.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Sorry, second by Ed. Any discussion? Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
All right.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried. All right, um, can I update? Michael, which got worse?
Yeah, the, uh, the E D A had their last meeting approved two facade grants. And so those, that'll be our third one going through. Um, the total about, the total amount for all three of them total, um, is about twenty five thousand dollars. So that's a good use of public funds, I think. Um, most of them are on brick and mortar work, foundation work. And two of them are all on or near second street. Um, other than that, um, we've obviously been dealing with, um. The start of second street project. Um, we had a couple snafus, but everything else has been going really well. They do have enough, um. A piping to do all the way from the county ditch all the way to Hennepin. So that will be done hopefully within the next two weeks, two weeks. And then they'll start, um, from Hennepin to Main Street. Um, so that'll take a while. Obviously, that's a pretty deep cut. It's thirty to forty feet down. Um, it'll be a center cut. They're gonna try to keep the sidewalks in as long as they can. Um, so after that, it'll be gravel and or boards. Um, depending on accessibility.
Did the E D A was talking all about, um, assisting businesses when it's really heavy duty construction going on?
Yeah, um, the league of Minnesota cities weighed in on that. Um, they don't want us to leave people around. But we're, Doug and I were trying to conjure up some like volunteers that would be willing to come do it. And we'll also have. Starting on May seventh, we'll actually have some of our summer staff on, so.
What, what are you looking for volunteers for?
Just to help people get around downtown, get their mail.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I volunteer.
Yeah.
I think mail, and I, I think the postmasters, I got a couple of her posts already.
Devon, her team have been really good. Yeah.
I think that'll be, that'll be good. And they'd even bring, she said they'd bring it out to people if they want, so. I think hopefully we can help everybody. Get through it.
Yep.
It's really the first month and a half after they get from Hennepin to Main Street. It's gonna be extremely painful. But then after that, it should be a little bit smoother settling, because it won't be as deep and it won't be in front of businesses.
Right. Okay, anything else?
No.
Adam, do you have anything for us? With the fire department. Have a seat.
So it's Don jacked me up when I hadn't been here all year yet. So I'm Adam Poggle.
We didn't know who you are.
Yeah. So I wanna start out, uh, I, we have two retirements coming up this year. One actually very soon, uh, Scott Treborn.
Imagine that.
Uh, which is next week. He started May first in ninety four and is gonna retire May first to twenty four. So he's got thirty years on. So, uh, we're gonna miss him. Yeah, we tried, we tried, but, uh, and then Rodney Fisher is gonna retire in August. And he's already sent his letter in. Uh, he started in August first of oh two, so I have twenty two years in. Um. We do anticipate a few other ones retiring, but I have not yet got anything, so. Uh.
Do you guys do any recognition, like? With Mike with.
Just.
Cause when I talked to Scott last week and he told me he had been on that many years, I'm like, I mean, that's a lot of.
That is.
Time.
Yeah, Better Banquet, we do, uh, we used to do a plaque, but now I think the plaques have gotten very expensive. Not that the price really matters, but, uh, we're gonna, we're looking at some different avenues to, for things. So we're gonna give them a couple of options that.
Maybe we could have the Thunderbird D S W class, make something like that. I mean, in the future.
Yeah, so it's.
The newspaper.
Yeah, we're, uh, we got some different ideas floating around that we're gonna give them options to choose from and.
Okay.
But, uh.
Yeah, you better give some thought to, because there's gonna be probably a.
Yeah.
Small string of retirements.
Yeah.
A lot of guys that are.
Yeah, it's in the timeline for getting everything made, because some of, uh, one of them is handcrafted. So, I mean, the timeline to put your order in then.
Well, if, if you have two retirements now, what, where's your staff at?
We're sitting at twenty five.
Yeah.
Uh, we got, we just approved one tonight and then, uh, we're supposed to have one in the works. He's been in contact with me. As, I don't know if he's grabbed the application to fill out, but he's transferring from, uh, another department, so. Just the formality of the paperwork to, he's got the training, so. Uh. Pork chop dinner was a great turnout, great, uh. Um. Support from the community and townships, so it's good to see everybody.
Mm-hmm.
Couple upcoming events that we're gonna, specialty stuff, is we're gonna have, uh, the train company, T C W come in. And they got a trailer. Basically, we did, before I was on, they did this in, I think, Green Isle. But I don't know if, how, what the extent of it was, but they put together a trailer and they're actually gonna try pulling out. A locomotive out here, but this trailer is gonna be in Morton on the tenth, and it's coming to us June eleventh. At seven, down here by the fire hall.
So what kind of trailer, what, like a?
Kinda just, uh. It has all the connection point, you know, just. The goodies of what goes into a, a train car. So for us as fire department, what we need to look for. What we should stay away from, from not cutting, touching, what's gonna move.
And this is open to the public then, or is this something that's just?
We're gonna open it up. Uh, we got a chief's meeting coming up May ninth, and we're gonna, we're gonna open it up to anybody that wants to come. I mean, we're all along here. It, it's only gonna benefit anybody, so. Uh, yeah, I would say if anybody wants to come down and take a look. And then also, we're gonna, we've started this last year. We're gonna help out the lodge with their fire drill. They haven't, previous years, they haven't done. Proper fire drill according to state code. So we go over there and help them out with that now. Um. A lot of the residents don't like setting off the buzzer and it's really loud and. But it's nice to help them out, keep them up to fire code and, and that. And like I mentioned, uh, we're gonna have a chief's meeting, uh, May ninth. And we're gonna work on a lot of different things, but one of the things we're gonna work on is our mutual aid agreement. It's twenty plus years old. And there's a lot of. Stipulations in there that are twenty years old material, you know, back twenty years ago. The, the wages, the pay, you know, everything is not. Black and white in there, so, uh, we heard it from our townships. Trying to, you know, recoup some of that money, you know, as it stands right now, well, we've, we've actually just. Uh, mutilated this weekend. We, we received mutilated and. You get, you get nothing. You get to come out and drive your fire trucks and. You know, for a lot of departments, it's a wage going out the door and they got nothing to recoup it. So we're gonna try putting some together. Like I said, it's not gonna happen overnight, but hopefully. We got another meeting in September. We'll come back in September. See what everybody's thoughts were, talk to our administrators and and city, and see what we have to come to, a little bit. Joined effort of countywide. I just was informed today that this was tried years ago. Um, when Lonnie was on a chief or assistant chief, so. Uh, it's not, nothing new, but it just has to be redone and upgraded.
What, the Minnesota cities have something like that?
There's a different, a few different takes, yeah, yeah. And I know. That no county in the state is the same.
No.
Not one.
Nicola County is going through theirs right now. I've been in contact with the chief in Lafayette, and theirs looks very similar to what ours is. And they are not talking about. Any cost.
Doesn't like the city's insurance company drive some of that? No.
They don't, because most, most fire departments are are volunteer, and those that are not volunteer, almost all of them stay in their own. Troubles. They don't move.
Right.
And you know, this is that conversation tenfold when it comes to what cities and townships and that partnership looks like when it comes to fire department. And there is not one city in Sibley County that is the same when it comes to their townships. We are all different, and then you multiply that by every county and every township and city in the state of Minnesota. And it is a mixed bag.
You know, and we, we share townships. I know, well, Gaylord, we share with Gibbon, and also Lafayette has a piece of one township. You know, so it's, you're, you're basically getting put against each other, cause they're saying, well, they charge this, why don't you charge this? So we just wanna be more uniform, so it's, it's all not only fair, but you know. We can say, well, this is the Sibley County policy, so to speak.
Right.
So, we're gonna work on it. It's not gonna, like I said, it's not gonna happen overnight, but. Hopefully, it uh. Yeah, I mean, twenty plus years of mutual aid, and it's time to revisit it and so. Yeah, and then new members, so we're still, you know, still looking, you know, with the upcoming. Uh, retirements, so.
What's your ideal number?
We're gonna have up to thirty.
Okay.
So, but we, we are sitting very good. I will say that, uh, compared to talking with a few other departments, they are down lower than we are. So we are in a good shape, but like to stay that way too.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, library, that should probably be longer.
Yeah, I know, I just circled that to you. Sorry.
Yep, uh, so we met on Tuesday working on um. They have their plans for the summer library schedule. They're gonna be changing some hours around, so they will be open later on Thursday nights. And then closing at noon on Friday, um, opening a little earlier Friday morning to um. To try to match the city thing, but to allow um, Thursday nights as a way for people going out of town. And things for the weekend to maybe have one more shot at picking things up before they leave. Um, looking at. Uh, Farm City Fun Fest activity and booth for Saturday, and they have. Um, some things planned for entertainment and activities for kids on uh, Saturday. And we're coordinating to make sure that's not um, a conflict with any other activities going on at that time. So these, the address been um, double checking with the committee to make sure we're good to go on that. Uh, talking about parade for uh, Sunday and things. And then um, I S G, I believe, is looking at a refresh for the library as well. To um, look at some updates for technology with where like the computers and things are. And also safety wise, um, to make sure that the desk and stuff is safe and accessible for staff.
Alright, any questions for Wanda? Um, hopefully, Glucks, sure, I'm here with.
Yeah, Troy is still on vacation. He's in South Korea visiting his son.
Good.
Um, I know, really good. Guys know Grant Street is gonna have some minor repair work done um, uh, in June. Uh, we have ordered the concrete, we have contracted with the Miller Brothers are gonna come help us. So we have a cutting saw, we have everything. We're gonna try to get some of the, the larger. Um. Canyons out of the road and try to make that a little bit more smooth. Um, they do have that on the docket. Summer help, um, so all of our summer help that was here last year, including Brody, is are coming back. So, yeah, it's great, especially since this year, probably we probably don't get as lucky. There's probably gonna be more rain. She needs more grass, which means a lot more pollinating water. Um, but Brody will actually be back early May, and then the kids obviously, when they get done with school. Um. There's um, some televising and some um, things in the park that we're working on uh, for the splash pad. We've had a couple meetings with I S G and C R S, the company that's making our splash pad. Um, that is continuing to progress. Obviously, we can't do any um. Actual work until we figure out if we got the D N R grant. So uh, the D N R grant doesn't pay for engineering, doesn't pay for dirt work, doesn't pay for environmental reviews or plots. So that stuff can keep going, but as it comes to like actually moving dirt, doing the the things. Um, we can't do that until June. Cause that's when we'll know. Other than that, Troy will be busy with Second Street, the Culver project, and then um, the new seals. For the, the sewer sys- system that you guys approved last time will be probably put in next week. Um, and then the containment area out by the ponds, probably another month. Um, before they can get that done, but that's moving along as well.
Okay, good. Anything on the planning commission?
They have not had.
Neither has RS fiber utilities.
Nope, I did it all.
Alright, ambulance, Ed.
Uh. Status quo, we, our call volume is still uh, considerably elevated from previous year. We have five calls this weekend, so we're up to one nineteen. Uh, for the year, which will put us about three fifty at the end of the year if it stays at this current volume. We've got two people that are interested in joining us, and if I can get these two people. Um, as E M Ts and. Fully E M Ts, then we can, we'll be able to go to five crews with with my current staff, and that'll, that'll. Spread out our timing a little bit and and give everybody a little bit of a break. Right now, we're running four, so it's every fourth weekend and. So, um. Don't have anyone talking about retiring, believe it or not.
It'll be there before you know it.
I know. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Logan, got anything on the police for us?
I'm sure. You need to get your boot back on.
Oh, it's better this way.
Not to make this a public debate, but.
What does the doctor say about your boot?
He said that if it doesn't hurt, you should exercise it. That's what he said, he did. Um.
In case you don't know, I got beat up by two girls. That's factual.
That's a fact.
That, that is factual, yeah. Um, thanks, I appreciate that. Um, yeah, so things are going as well as they can be. Um, and. You were just kinda plugging away, getting all the shifts covered and whatnot that um, were open. Um, I think it was a really good timing that we uh, did that mutual aid agreement with Gaylord. Because we've both been able to help each other out quite a bit since that happened, so I'm very fortunate for that. Um, Aaron's plugging away with, and especially with the nice, nicer weather coming up now. We're gonna be ramping up the city ordinances and that kind of thing.
Do you wanna talk about Gibbons new police chief?
Yeah, yeah, so um, Sarah started on the second of April. Um, I'm really excited um, to have her on board and. Um. We'll be working together a lot to get things the way that they need to be and. Um, yeah, so really excited about that. I'm officially done now with all given duties. Uh, as the police chief.
Question.
Yeah, so, um, but obviously, you know, there's a lot for her to learn too, so we're gonna. Still be helping out, and then um, she has asked if Karen Zimney could um, essentially be. A contract employee through us to help her out. Um, it's essentially what we've been doing beforehand anyways, when I took over as the chief over there, and then Karen was helping out with. This stuff that she's an expert in um, on that backend stuff, so um. Sounds like Gibbons all on board for that as well, and so how it would kinda work is Karen would clock in. Under our pay or our uh, home base, and then we would just bill her hours to the city of Gibbon when she. Works over there, so I think it'll be good. Other than that, I don't doubt a whole lot.
Is garage completely done?
Yes and no. Um, it's completely done in the fact that we can use it now um, for all of our needs. Uh, we still need to get the pressure washer in there. We still need the generator, um. And the doors and that kinda stuff. Um, take that back. The man doors, the, the ones that are gonna be permanently in there, we still need those. Um, but everything else is, is there and just waiting on those last little things, so.
You're, you're pouring an apron out on the front, right?
Correct, yeah, and that'll be, according to Paulie said, some point this spring. So, hopefully sooner rather than later, cause we're tracking in a lot of dirt in there, a lot of sweeping.
Believe it.
So. And hopefully, that gets done, cause we don't necessarily want all that dirt going down in the drain either, so.
So much to serve.
That's right.
There's no sense to, well, there is sense to serve, there's no inmates.
Oh, yeah, that, that's also true.
He's looking by himself pretty much.
Okay, any further questions for Logan?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yourself.
Yeah. I didn't say it.
Uh, cable commission.
We mean that, no, yeah, next one, no, this Wednesday.
Okay.
We'll be Wednesday, sorry.
Alright, and parks, do anything, Logan?
Other than engineering, we really haven't made any other decisions yet.
Alright.
And then the other thing that I wanted to point out is uh, there is a grant through Smith for business owners right now. Um, it's up to fifty thousand dollars worth of grants. Um. It's due on the twenty-fourth. I have helped, I think, five businesses in our area. Go through and register for it, so if they're looking for help, I can help, but it's pretty easy once you get on the system. But you have to do it through Smith, it's not through um, the city. So it looks at um, your twenty-one, twenty-two gross earnings, and then um, what you plan to do with it. So um, depending on your gross earnings, that's how you fall into the categories of how much you can get for grant one. They have, if I remember correctly, about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to give away.
Oh.
In grants to businesses. Um, those that did not receive COVID are at our money. Um, from Smith earlier and the state um, are priority right now. So.
Yeah, thanks for helping out the businesses you did.
Those stores open? Very nice.
I've heard different. Alright, anybody got anything else? Oh, I will undertake a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I don't, is there a second? Second by Wanda. All the favorit, yeah.